Here we go, we've got it. It's a Board of Selectmen meeting, February 6, 2019. Pleasure, allegiance?
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
7:00 PM. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor? minutes. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 16, 2019, as written or amended. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any corrections on that?
Couldn't find a one.
Okay, I did. On page three, in the second paragraph down, essentially dead center, I was reported to have said $105 per ton. I don't know what I was thinking of, but I misspoke. It was $157 per trip was what it actually should say. And that was the cost of going to Willimantic. So it's $157 and a little bit of change per trip. And any other corrections? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've got the USDA letter, that should be in your packets. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but essentially this is the response to the USDA request for ADA corrections and to the building here. And that went out on January 22nd. And it's a matter of the public record at this point and available. But we have responded and to the extent that we can, we've got everything done that's required. And there are a few things that are gonna have to be left until the weather is a little bit warmer. And then I have a memo from the town clerk. And this is from Deb Danette, January 29, 2019. The number of electors pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section 9238A attached, please find statistics from the active voter registry list obtained from the Connecticut election management system. If you look at it, you find that we have registered today 1,650 Republicans, 1,934 Democrats, minor parties 100, total unaffiliated 2,866, or a total of 6,550. And we have a total of three voting machines. That's as of the 29th day of January 2019. And we have a letter. This is from Richard P. Van Etten to Elizabeth Lunt, Public Works Director, Town of East Haddam. Dear Mrs. Lunt, Ms. Lunt, related, we wish to thank you and your road crew for the outstanding job they did in removing the dangerous trees on the lower end of Clark Hill Road some time ago. Especially appreciated by us and many others since we are walkers, joggers up and down the road. We also want to tell you of our appreciation for the improved safety this has provided for all of us who travel the road in our vehicles. We want you and the crew members to further know that we do not take for granted the many services they also faithfully deliver. And as signed sincerely, Richard P. Van Etten and Geraldine M. Van Etten. Nice little pat in the back for our crew and all the work that they do for us. The first selectmen's report. We do have the job opening for our building official posted. It will close February 21. We have three responses to date on that. So we should be in a position to fill it after February 21st. And so far as responses to previous meeting questions, were no citizen questions at the last meeting needing answers. And with that, I'll move forward to citizens' concerns. Have anything out there?
Is the, the C and D, Chris with nine meter out? Got you. I'll bet the transfer station, the C and D, is the town charging for that demolition for C and D, commercial demolition material? You got a big post that says, you know, $100 per ton. I see a lot of people just driving by. So I'm just wondering, are we actually collecting that revenue?
We actually collecting more revenue than we have in the past. And if you look at it, the road is blocked, so you have to go over the scale.
Okay, but are we collecting revenue?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
One of my complaints has been going down there and seeing people just blow by. That's why the cones are there now.
Okay.
And it's still not as good as we want it to be. Once we change the routing in there, they'll have to come up, buy the hopper, be checked, and then they'll go down to the scale and somebody's gonna definitely know they're there. I suppose you could still slip through, but it's a whole lot more difficult than it used to be. And the goal is to collect from everyone that we're supposed to collect from. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Finished business moving forward. And East Haddam Village Revitalization Committee. And we have before us this evening, the RFQ. This is going to go to the lawyer from here. And basically, the process is the lawyers generate the initial document. We start out with a roughed-in. They complete it, send it back to us, we rework it, change the things that we are allowed to change, and anything that's involved with the AIA, the American.
That's for the construction ones, this didn't do that.
Well, this one still has to go back to the lawyer, nonetheless, and gets polished and finished up. And so it's on its way there. And hopefully, as quickly as it comes back to us, there'll be very few or no corrections, and we'll have the RFQ for the village property out. And it's been a long time coming, but we finally got it together, and that's really super. That was what we got. Yeah, I'll just wait this lawyer for review. It's about the fifth draft, it's been a lot of work put into that, back and forth, back and forth. But we think we're finally arriving. Moving on to the transfer station, that's moving along. It's worth noting that if you go to the website, the town website now, the what's in, what's out chart, which is two columns of what you can put into the recyclables and what you shouldn't, has been up for quite some time. We now have something called a widget. That allows you to enter an item that you have some question about, and it'll come back and tell you whether or not you can recycle it. And I was playing with it today, my big thing is the foils off the top of yogurt packs. And it doesn't really understand foil off of yogurt packs yet. So it's got a little bit of improvement to do. But it is there and it does work. I think that's all I've got there. Citation hearing, there's been no movement on that. And the control of animals ordinance is being reviewed. It's still moving forward. And we've gotta do some rewriting, and I believe Jimmy's handling that right now. So A. C. B. No way into these things. Okay, there's a proposal out in the legislature, and they're looking for our support and getting on board for open space funding. This is gonna be a legislatively-driven item. It appeared last year, didn't go anywhere, it's back again. And the way it's written right now, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but basically, a municipality may impose by vote of the legislative body, town meeting, of such municipality, a buyer's tax on the conveyance of real property occurring on or after July 1, 2019, at the rate of not more than 1% of the consideration paid by the buyer in excess of $150,000. So basically, if someone buys a house, and it sells for $150,000, there's no fee. But any monies over $150,000 according to this, you would be paying up to 1%. And the municipality of the town, East Haddam, gets to set the level they want. They might set a half a percent, a quarter, they might set a percent. It's an interesting item. I'm a little troubled, back in November, the 27th, what was being offered, the Land Conservation Council who's pushing this, indicated that it does not apply to the first $150,000 or a higher amount at the municipality's discretion. And at that point, we could've set the limit wherever we liked, 200,000, 300,000, and anything above that figure, we charge 1% or whatever percent we wanted. I'm a little troubled, 'cause I kinda like that idea. My own support if this were to happen would be for a higher limit than $150,000. But Rob, you wanna address some of this?
Well, the $150,000 level was established to address low-income housing or first-time buyers, so they wouldn't have to pay into this, or if it was over $150,000. Not very many houses that are under $150,000. But last year, in, going back, actually, two years from the start, there was, I think, 10 or 12 houses in East Haddam that were sold for $150,000 less, it could've been more. But the value here is that, again, it is over $150,000. So if you had a $300,000 house that you were purchasing, 1% or up to 1% could be charged on the second $150,000. Money can be used for, first of all, it never leaves the town, so it can't be grabbed by the state for other purposes. It goes into the town's coffers immediately. It can be used for acquiring open space. It can be used for paying down bonds that have been used to purchase open space. In other words, open space that's already been purchased and we're paying a bond, which we have two or three right now, can be used to pay those down. It can also be used to pay for stewardship of open-spaced land that the town, in this case, administers. And you could also award grants to other nonprofits, land trusts, or nature conservancy or something that was buying open-spaced lands. So that's it in a nutshell. As you said, this is enabling legislation only. It means that the town can opt-in, shall we say? It's up to the voters of the town as to whether they want to enact this bill, this fee. And, you know, there's more towns now that are interested in it than last year, there's a little bit more lead time than we had last year. We did sign onto it last year, we did approve it. But, you know, there's neighboring towns that are also Lime, and I don't remember all the towns right now that are on it. And it also could be used for brownfield remediation, such as the situation kept down in the center of East Haddam, so, the village. So at this time, the closest town that's signed onto it is Lime. But there's quite a few more towns in the state that are interested in being enumerated as a supporter. And this will be a pilot program. Now, where this has been done in other counties throughout this country, voters have found it to be very, have been in favor of it enough so that when, if they had a sunset clause on it, they revoted it or re, or, excuse me, voted to keep the, this program. And also, in places where there were pushback from Realtors saying it would have a negative impact, where there were sunset clauses, and I'm thinking Suffolk County, Long Island for one, voters and home builders both supported it when the sunset clause came, because they found property values were increased and value of homes actually went up.
So we voted on this last year, too, and it didn't, it never got passed last year?
It didn't move out, it moved out of the environment or whatever legislative subcommittee was working with it, and it didn't get brought up.
So even if we vote tonight to support the legislation of it, doesn't mean we have to accept it in the long run in the town?
Absolutely.
Okay, one other thing I note on this, if I remember correctly from last year, you had to support this, which is what the letter we sent last year was all about, in order to be eligible for it.
Same thing this year, yeah.
And I, well, I don't see any restriction in this, this says you have to vote for it to be eligible. I believe that existed in the bill last year. That only those towns which voted to support it were going to be eligible for doing this. There's no such language in this proposed bill.
I believe it's under a statement of purpose, and it lists 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 11.
The proposed bill will only extend to municipalities that ask to be included.
Yeah.
So that's, I think, what you're talking about?
Yes.
But can you ask to be included after?
Yeah, it's 'cause this is, until it's voted on, until it goes to full legislature, yes, you can ask to be, ask to sign on. This was just a presentation in front of the board.
But what about after it's voted on? Can you still ask to be included?
That was up in the air last year. And it became moot because it never moved.
Right, but at this point, we don't know that answer.
We don't know that.
This one does, for some reason, I remember the bill as written last year made it clear that you had to, you know, vote, you know, be on it upfront, that if you weren't, you wouldn't be eligible. This doesn't say that.
Well, the newest one I'm looking at is 5254, is that what you're looking at?
5254, yeah.
Basically, where it says state, a statement of purpose on the next page, on the second page, to enable municipalities such as Bolton, those have all signed on to this. And we can add on to it.
But it doesn't say that's any restriction on us doing it at any point in the process.
Well, it is a pilot program, so if it's successful, I'm sure it will be expanded statewide. But right now, it's only four towns that are interested in getting on it as part of the pilot program. It's basically the exact same language, might be a slight difference in it, but as last year.
And this also does not give you that flexibility of setting a higher amount that's exempt.
Last year was, there was no exception. I mean, it wasn't included. This could be brought up, I suppose, to your local legislators if you wanted to do that. There was a discussion last year about places such as Greenwich, where the value of the homes were often in the half a million dollar range and up, that they could raise that lower level. I believe that this legislation last year had the same language. I don't have that confirmation.
Can you pack it?
Can you pack it?
Yeah.
Look at the last, briefly, I've, you can go up to the last page that specifically addressed it, and the first page it briefly addressed, you can ask, the bottom one.
So the current bill only lists these towns in it because that's all that's signed up for at this point?
Yeah, those are all that it's signed up for at this point. I know there's several other towns that have, are signing up or have signed up, probably after this has been published.
So we don't decide what the maximum?
Well, you do that with a rate of not more than 1%, so we can set the rate.
The $150,000, right, it says?
I mean, if we wanted to exempt.
Change it at our discretion. But is that all decided after the bill is passed and we sign, we don't actually accept it until after the bill is passed?
Right, if the bill was passed and it had language in it that we didn't like, did not like, then we would not have to do anything with it. I mean, to take it to referendum for the voters to vote on it, if there was something in it that we thought was outrageous or something like that, we would not have to do anything.
So this has to go to referendum?
For us to, for us to adopt it.
Or town meeting or referendum?
Town meeting or referendum, excuse me.
Yeah, it's a legislative body, and those are both legislative bodies.
Last year, looking at the sales in town here for the previous 12 months, it would've generated about $140,000 for the town. With these standards, with the current standards in place, that we're talking about here, $150,000, first $150,000 is exempt.
Our stewardship of the land.
They just, the concern is, does it create a damper on house sales?
Yeah, no, I know.
Where it has been enacted, it does not. One of the reasons is, first of all, the thought is in the process is that people that are moving into town are supporting the town through this, and the town's efforts for purchasing open space. And that is a big part of what East Haddam is known for. Second part of it is that the values of the houses tend to go up. So if you keep your house for 10 years and you're near open space, the value probably goes up. And we have Realtors in town that always list, or mention that in their real estate ads if one of the properties is near open space. The second part of it is, it has little impact on the average mortgage that people pay, because it's, you know, say, on a $300,000 house, if you're $1,500, over, again, over 50-year mortgage, that would be taxed on to whatever they're borrowing. So it's literally, probably a dollar a month or something like that. Be more than that, but one piece of gear for the more.
So we're just voting to whether to add our name to the bill?
That's it.
Whether or not we want to be signed on, and potentially eligible where others might not be, it's a little hard to tell whether or not that's actually the case. But that certainly was how it was last year. Ready for me to make a motion? I'll make a motion, East Haddam be added to the list of municipalities interested in participating in the pilot program, and then the committee bill 5254, Act establishing a pilot program authorizing municipalities to impose a buyer's conveyance fee on real property to fund the purchase and stewardship of open space. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent.
We're on it. I think the bigger battle's gonna be when we set the rate, if it ever happens.
I'm just hoping it ever gets passed.
Okay.
Can I ask that you give the suggested changes to last year's letter?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Do you need suggested changes to last year's letter that you want to go out? That would be great. Would that last year's letter be sent?
Yeah.
Can you do that again, I don't see it out?
Oh.
Before you send it out?
I'm begging to go to myself to do that.
I was waiting to move on, wasn't paying attention.
Moving on to new business. Board and commission changes. We've got the East Haddam Revitalization Commission, Village Revitalization Committee. And I'm gonna read this to you, you've got it in front of you. Slime and call the selectmen's tent to draft the minutes of the January 23, 2019, East Haddam Village Revitalization Committee meeting. The meeting, the committee discussed the standing of Michael Gianta as a regular member of the committee. It is noted that Mr. Gianta had not attended a meeting since the committee was reestablished. In conversations with Chairman Bill Garrish, Mike offered to help the committee as best he could, but noted that for the most part, he would not be available for the East Haddam Revitalization Committee meetings. The committee was reluctant to ask that he be completely removed from the committee, but felt that one of the alternates that participates on a regular basis would be better suited to fill the regular member position. The committee recommended that Michael Gianta be made an alternate member, for the time being, as the alternate member Gerald, JT Smith, fill the regular member position. And if you look at the minutes.
I've got other business.
Let's see. There we go. If you look at the minutes from that, we have stapled to the end of it, a note from Mike, or from Bill, actually. I saw Mike Gianta last week at an event at the high school. He agreed to resign from the committee. He basically put it to me to take care of it. I doubt he will reach out to you directly. Please advise me how you think we can move forward with this. Thank you, Bill. The committee was reluctant to remove him from the committee without some sort of written statement from him, from Mike Gianta. But they did feel it would be good to bring an alternate up and give them the opportunity to operate as a full-time member. So with that note, I'm gonna make a motion to change the status of Michael Gianta from a regular member to an alternate member, and Gerald Smith from an alternate member to a regular member of the East Haddam Village Revitalization Committee. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
I'll give it to you, Sue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a good move and a good way to handle it.
I assume you'll reach out and tell Bill exactly how to handle the next part of it?
Well, Bill is reluctant, the committee's reluctant to just drop him.
You're talking about telling Mike?
Well, Mike says he's agreed to resign.
He doesn't care.
He agreed to resign, but technically, you don't do that without a...
Well, I know, but...
And so they're reluctant to just do it arbitrarily.
I know, not now, but in the next meeting or two or whatever.
I think they'll be talking about it. Okay. Tax refunds. I'm gonna make a motion to award a tax refund in the amount $2,697.32 to Anne Marie Yote. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, one quick question. What is the total refund?
She was being taxed at the full amount.
Okay.
You understand now, okay.
Yeah, I was confused, because you see the $17 over here, you gotta look on the left.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And you have to go back.
Then it sorts itself out.
We're confused together.
Okay. Okay. Once again, we're at the public comment section.
Couple of things. On the RFQ, Emmett, um, just saying that's going to attorneys. Committee had requested that it come back to the committee after the Selectment's Office was done making the changes that it planned to make before it goes to the attorneys.
Oh, it went to Bill Garrish, and Bill Garrish was asked to forward it. Um, it's just going to the attorney for, for review, and then I asked Bill...
It's sort of silly. The attorney, if the committee finds some issues, they have to go to the attorney twice.
I, I doubt he'll make a lot of changes to it, but it is that bill now to send to you guys.
Yeah. If you find something, let us know.
I'm trying to do it both at the same time so I can make that March first date.
It's going to go on for a long time. Getting it out for March first does not change the, the end view of this thing because it's going to take a long time.
I, I think emotionally, getting it out is going to be important.
Thanks. The, the other thing is, on the subject of the open space funding, a couple of thoughts. Regarding to special funds, which this would be gathered as tax, the state is notorious for taking special funds and rolling them, as you well know, Rob, into the general fund. So, there's no guarantee that any funds are developed by this.
Well, the special fund.
The state stays here with the town.
Stays in the town. It never goes to the state.
They don't leave the town.
Now, somewhere in the future, they may.
State will figure out a way to get it. The, the other thing is, I know this is supposed to be for the buyer. I also know that it has to go to a town meeting, so this isn't a deal. However, there's no guarantee that the buyer's going to be paying this. Somewhere along the line, the, I'm sure the buyer's going to say, look, I'm not paying this extra fund. The seller's going to have to pay the fee, or he's going to have to reduce his house.
Maybe have to reduce, right.
So, just a thought. Go up for discussion again.
I, and I think a town meeting, should we ever get that far, is probably a place to make those points. And, uh, I think you'll find a lot of support there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Todd?
Todd Gelson, fifty Vogel Road. I have about five questions. The first regards the request for qualifications for the East Hattam Revitalization Committee. Who is the lawyer that's going to look over the document?
That's Hallahan and Sage, and I don't know exactly who over there is going to be doing it.
So, is the town, the town attorney is going to be?
Town attorney, yes.
Town attorney? Now, this could be quite a bit of work. Um, are they going to get a special rate or is it a normal rate that they can get now?
I, I can't even begin. They, we have a, I mean, they are our attorney. We have a rate established for them.
So, that'd be the same rate then?
I...
You know what that is?
Off the top of my head, a hundred and eighty-five dollars, I think. That's off the top of my head.
So, that's cheap.
That's true. That's really good.
It's off the top of my head, but I think that's what it is.
Okay.
But I will, I will verify because not possible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next question I have is about the transfer station. Uh, moving along. I've been out of town for a couple of weeks, so I don't know what's going on, but, um, is, is the back gate open on the, on the, on the hopper?
No, they're still putting up the door, and I'm a little surprised they haven't finished that. At the moment, they have an electrical problem with the ram down below that, uh, and so, the whole thing is shut down.
So, the hopper's not working?
Not working. The, the ram that drives the material into the box. They had an electrical problem last week, got down there, corrected it. It seems to have recurred, but it's in a position now where they have to bring someone in to do it.
Okay. Uh, the next question I have about the transfer station is, um, you mentioned redrawing the roadway, realigning the roadway based on Ramon's suggestion. And where's that at?
Uh, once we reopen it, I want it done as quickly. They have to repaint the lines. We're having some signage made up, and that's all hopefully going to be done quite quickly. And, uh, one thing that I did not comment on, that I wanted to, and I apologize, uh, a year ago, Christine Brown, who works for the State of Connecticut, and is putting together the smart programs, the, you know, page your throat programs. We've been in touch with her, having scheduling and a get-together probably around the twentieth, the nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first. And what she's going to do is help us market it and introduce it to the town. She's done this all over. We've also been in touch with John Pettaplace, who is from, uh, well, he actually lives here in town, George Geese's old house, and he runs the transfer station over in Stonington. They implemented this system back in nineteen ninety-two. They've had enormous success. He's been in. We've talked with him. He's willing to come on board and tell people about what he's done and how it works, and be supportive of the whole process for us. So, we're moving forward quite quickly now on it.
Very good. I have, I don't have six, six questions. You maybe need one more. You, you and Beth went and visited the Willimantic Waste some months ago?
About a month ago.
Month ago now? What was the outcome of that visit?
It was basically just information, just talking about what was going on, what we could expect. My big concern was the recyclables. What's going on? And what is the, you know, the problem, and what are the answers? And the big problem is that China is refusing our recyclables. And pretty much across the board, they want ninety-seven point five percent purity. It's almost impossible to get that. And therefore, very little of what we have is going over there, and they are the single biggest user of recyclable material in the world. The dilemma that we have is, now what do we do with it? And there are some things that are still moving, some that are not, that they're just inventorying. And it's going to be a lot more expensive getting rid of recyclables in the future. There's no question about that. That was one of the questions. The other question we have was, well, now what do we do? How are we going to deal with recyclables here? And we don't have any infrastructure to do it. Plastics go to China. They do, do whatever they do, wash them, clean them, melt them down, turn them into pellets, then ship them off to be reformed into something else. We can do that here, and we're starting to do that. There's, there's, actually, China's coming over, setting up some plants. Uh, we're setting up some plants to do it. The dilemma is that our manufacturing base has gone overseas. We don't really manufacture a lot here in America anymore. So, it has the appearance that perhaps we're going to make pellets out of the plastic, and then we're going to ship the pellets out. Those will be ninety-nine, ninety-seven point five percent clear, and we'll be able to market the pellets that we create. Uh, glass right now is headed down, where is it? North Carolina, South Carolina? That's the closest place that can do it. That's tough to get rid of, but you can get rid of some of it. It's a, it's a really dynamic, lots of challenges, changing over every day sort of market. And I felt that we really needed to get a little better sense of what was going on and what the opportunities were going to be, and what the challenges were going to be for us. And, you know, it's going to work its way out. I know that, but I'm not sure just where it's going to end up.
Interesting.
Yep. Fascinating.
And could be expensive, too.
Could be expensive.
Two more questions. Uh, the status of the tree kite. Are we ten percent done, twenty percent done? Any idea?
I wouldn't think we were even close to ten percent done yet. As in the budget, we're looking at it. Beth has put a separate line item in for it. We're looking at options. They can be very expensive. Her estimate for the budget is about two million dollars if we just hire people to do it and take a couple of years. The alternative that she's suggesting is we buy our own bucket truck, hire a couple of guys, a hundred and ninety thousand for a bucket truck, probably about a hundred and forty thousand a year with benefits and everything for the guys that we hire. And maybe that's a better approach for it. So, we're still looking at it, trying to come up with a good answer. In the meantime, we're still cutting what we can and what we need to.
Thank you. That, last question, uh, the stormwater damage repair rework. Are we half done there, ninety percent done?
On which?
On the stormwater damage of the storm last October, road washouts, culvert washouts.
We are still trying to get two RFQs out, once again, back and forth. And, uh, the roads, with the exception of Neptune and Hemlock Valley and Ackley, are all passable now. They're all usable. But they have an enormous amount of work. Uh, we're going to be meeting, interviewing with FEMA this Friday for the next step in that process. Uh, FEMA is going to wind up paying hopefully for about seventy-five percent of the, uh, the repairs that we do. But those are going to take some time.
They already paid, they already approved seventy-five percent, not hopefully, right?
It's all a challenge as you go along. I mean, that's what we're scheduled to get, seventy-five percent. Now, it's going to be, does it qualify, doesn't it qualify sort of things? And so, that becomes the, uh, the next challenge, and making sure we jump through every hoop in the right way at the right time.
But if, we pay first, and they reimburse us?
Yeah, they'll be reimbursing us.
If we have all our paperwork done properly?
Yeah.
To code and all that stuff.
Now, we've got experience with the hurricanes. This is exactly what we did, how we processed it. And, uh, so, we know what, we know what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, forgive me for, if that sounds like I'm taking a dead horse here. Um, going back to the transfer station. President brought up an idea to me that I thought sounds somewhat viable, and I don't want to put a monkey wrench into traffic flow and so forth, but the subject came up about, uh, getting access into the transfer station, so, the stickers and monitoring, you know, the, the flow and so forth. And he suggested something kind of like what we have is, is almost like what you use every day to get into this building is your pass cards with an armed gate and work it either through, and, and again, Debbie's going to kill me for saying this, but either through the town clerk or through the assessor's or the sniper's office, I might even get to go up there. Be back tonight, but do it through some sort of government agency. So, what, you pay your taxes, you get your pass card. It's not a sticker to throw in a particular vehicle. It's a pass card. When you pay your taxes, you get the privilege of going to the transfer station and putting up the gate. There's not any monitoring. And again, this is not my idea. I can't take credit for this, but, and I'm sure it may have its, its high proposed, but it's just an idea, and I forgive me for not going into it.
I, I looked into this earlier and, and broached it. And actually, what you could do is have a sticker on the vehicle that is sensed, and the gate has a sensor that can identify that as a legal vehicle, and the gate opens and closes behind you. Uh, it's not all that expensive, probably about fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to set it up. And it did not get to great reception when I broached it. And I think we're, we're going to go on a very simple process initially. It may come to that. I'd like to see that myself. Because I like that idea of the gate that's automatic, and you get real good control at that point. One of the dilemmas is, somebody pulls up and they don't have a sticker. Now, we got to turn them around. Somehow, we have to get them out of there, out of the way, and that becomes cumbersome. But, uh, something we've been looking at. Thank you. Uh, anything else? Yes, sir.
So, as far as the, uh, James Chankey, Morrison Road, um, as far as your conversation with Willimantic Waste, did they recommend any changes we could make that help, you know, our recycling get cleaner?
Uh...
It's an ongoing problem at the transfer station, right, during recycling, being sent up. We're getting a lot of fees often. There are fines.
We're, we're getting...
We're getting fines for...
Kickback at us.
Yeah.
The bag system hopefully does that. And basically, that increases it. I, I've talked to, uh, John Pettaplace out to Stonington at length. And I said, well, are we going to see a lot of trash going into recyclables for people to avoid? He said, he said, really, they don't. Most people are pretty good about it. They're looking to do what's right. You're going to get the occasional. But he feels that once people understand, and a lot of it, to my mind, is people not understanding. If you go back twelve or fifteen years, we were actually sorting to recycle. Cardboard went here, cans went there, bottles, plastic. Each one had its own location. And then, all of a sudden, we said, oh, no, it's single stream. We're just going to, you just throw it all in and we'll, we'll sort it for you. I think that left many people very confused. If I remember correctly, we had a much higher recycling rate when people were sorting it. And then, all of a sudden, it's, well, they're going to sort it all for us, so we don't have to worry about it. And a lot of people don't appreciate the fact that the hopper, nothing is sorted. That's simply going to go to, uh, for, to be burnt for energy. And regardless what you put in, and you can stand there and just watch the bottles and cans and stuff that doesn't belong going in. One of the things that I've got Beth doing right now is two big signs, four by eights, that have the what's in, what's out on it, clearly deline, eliminated. One over the hopper, one over the other, over the recyclable materials. At the bottom, a note in big letters that says, put it in here. It costs you seventy dollars a ton to get rid of it. Put it in here. We get five dollars a ton. I think people, once they understand better, and that's one way of making them understand. Now, you guys out picking up on the road, you've got a much tougher job. And how do you persuade your people to separate it and do it well? Uh, I do know that a lot of towns have the two buckets, recyclables here and trash here. And people, at that point, really have an understanding of what they're putting where. Uh, using just whatever comes to hand in terms of containers muddies the water a lot. Uh, it's, and I'm not suggesting that you do anything different from what you're doing, but it is something that I've noticed.
Right. Education.
Education. Right now, at the, uh, transfer station, they're handing out what's in, what not on a eight and a half by eleven as busily as they can, making sure everybody gets a copy. And that's why we updated our website, so people would have the opportunity to go there. And once again, that foil off the top of the yogurt, and I eat a lot of yogurt, and I've been putting that in the recyclables for years. And it apparently screws up the paper trail, not the metal trail, and raises a lot of problems. Uh, I'm better now. I've been educated.
And so, as you implement it, you're going to, when you talk about the transfer station, the changes, you're talking about the committees, what we, what we as a committee reported to you.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
That's what you're moving with, right?
Yeah, by and large.
There's one left out, whatnot, you know, whatnot.
The one that's left out is the hauling, doing our own hauling.
Okay.
And we looked at that closely, and frankly, does not make sense, does not make financial sense.
Okay.
And I, I looked at it, ran numbers and ran numbers, and it finally dawned on me that the hundred and eight thousand savings was what it's costing right now, but didn't allow for what it was going to cost us. And all of a sudden, it, when you started looking at real numbers, it didn't make sense anymore.
Okay.
And then, we got the pushback from the guys up at the transfer station who said, we're not going to do the driving. And we started looking at the cost of actually putting another guy on, because that's sort of a take.
Right.
Uh, and once again, it made even less sense at that point.
Okay.
So, there's, we're not, not necessarily just taking everything at face value. We're looking at it carefully, making sure it works, making sure it's good.
Right.
And, uh, that's the only one that I've knocked out so far.
Okay. But the rest are still in play. Because it's important that they all go through together for the, you know, that, that's ultimately what I voted on is the package. And the committee voted on it as the package deal, not...
Yeah, we aren't, you know, I've checked around. The one forty that you recommended is excessive. Pretty much everyone for bulky. Uh, Stonington, talking to them, they were at a hundred like we were. They're going to one twenty.
Okay.
And that seems to be a good number that's out there right now, a fair number. That's where we've already gone. We've done that already.
Oh, you, you've actually done that?
That's, was put in place as of February first.
Okay, that's great news.
Uh, I mean, we are, we are going through, and I, I'm not going to promise you that everything's going to happen all at once. But it's going to happen in a nice, regular way, and it's going to try to make sense. And it is a changing, challenging environment out there. What China's done has changed everything. Uh, and where that's going to go, where it's going to lead to, not sure. And then, you've got the European model where you're prepaying for disposal. Mattresses and electronics right now are all prepaid for. We just put them in a box, and the state comes out, picks them up, and carries them away. Uh, that is all over Europe with all sorts of materials. I, I think that's going to become much bigger in the future, but short term, we're going to work on... But short term, we're gonna work on it, and let's see where we go in the long term.
Okay. And so as far as like the scale, just a recommendation, right? I think it's awesome, is you could see the traffic has slowed down back there. But like, you know, you put it in the, what, a sixty thousand dollar scale? That's what that costs?
Fifty at the time.
Yeah, great, you know, that's what we need. But now you're diverting all the traffic over the scale.
And it beats up the scale.
It's gonna beat up the scale.
Yeah.
And you know, the guy, people are still able to go around to the left of the cones ultimately, to drive on the grass and, you know, ripping that up. So maybe implement, you know, just like a full set of cones, and when people need to go, you gotta walk over there.
But this is, this is where changing the flow of traffic.
Yeah.
Suddenly, everybody goes up by the hopper, between the hopper and the recycling. And they get checked and they get told to go down to the scale. And whoever tells them to go down is gonna go down and weigh them.
Right, but they can still go straight ahead if they choose. No, we're not gonna get hit by a fence.
We're not gonna let people just go straight through. They're gonna come in, the exit right now for the transfer station.
Okay.
As you go down from the hopper.
Okay, so that gate will be closed.
No, that, you're gonna come in that way. You won't be able to just go up the road like you do now.
What, what's stopping you from driving up the road?
Probably cones, maybe a fence eventually.
Something will be stopped because.
But you're gonna be stopped.
Yeah, that's good.
And the, you know, the question there is, we have to allow people to get back out again, so we have to figure out how we make that work.
Okay.
Still a lot of challenges.
Right.
A lot of questions to be answered, but we're, we're gonna get there.
And you was, still like the recommendation with the committee was, if this is all implemented, there'll be a process that you'll let the haulers know when.
We're gonna work with you.
We were, we were six months, there was like, that process is still.
We're, we're gonna work with you.
Okay.
And that's been brought up repeatedly. We're gonna have to discuss exactly how long and exactly how, but the process is there.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't walked away from that.
All right.
Chris?
Yeah, so I have a real question that, I brought this address, you know, years back with our board. And we know that the recyclers up back would be contaminating with some type of demolition. Speedy and myself had gone up there, looked in there and found, you know, the dimes gone up there and pulled it out and stuff. So my question is with the C and D, which I asked before, my concern is, why is the town have C and D up there to begin with? That should just be removed. That should be between a homeowner and the contractor, or homeowner and a hauler, homeowner and themselves. We, as a town citizens, should not be paying any hauling fee or anything. We should just completely remove that out of the whole mix.
You're speaking of the demolition type stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, and.
That's the most expensive out of everything, not, not MS Waste, which your homeowner, not recycling.
I'm with you, and that wasn't.
That should just be completely removed, because that is where everyone, like James here is saying, is reckon the scale. Everyone goes up there. That's why I ask if we're collecting fees for that, because I question that. I've seen people while I've been up there dumping my recyclers, just right on up and dump all load. And I've had people in town asking, hey, Chris, what do you do with my demolition? I haul out of town, I go to Hartford, I go to Willimantic, I go down to Essex. I do not, I have not done C and D in town, we start, we go back and, if I look up at last time I wrote a check, it was probably nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five. Because I've been hauling out of town. So that's just my question is, that's why I was asking Beth, I wanted to see what the numbers is in that. How much is the town paying for the hauling of those cans? And are we be really actually subsidizing John A. for his demolition of his house?
Demolition, you pay, you go over the scale.
Yeah, but are we actually collecting all that?
Well, that's the point. And once.
So I'm just wondering if the town, we should just say, let's just get rid of that.
Well, for the mo, for the moment, we're gonna leave it in.
Yeah.
But that's on my radar.
And I'm just saying something we should discuss.
Homeowner, and I'm one of them, I constantly rebuilding things, tearing, I've been doing it for forty years, and the house will finish in another forty. But you can go down to Home Depot, buy a bag, and they come pick it up and get rid of it. Very nicely done. If you have a contractor in there, a major job, you're gonna do a roof or something, they can get a box, put it in, and it goes somewhere. But not to our, not to our transfer station. That's the ultimate goal, and that's down the road. But we're gonna get there. But you're absolutely right, that's, that's on the radar.
In the meantime, I would just recommend that we really need to, as you, you did say, you know, and I'm not, we are collecting all the fees, we're, we're really not. If you, you know, I, on the transfer station committee, we looked at numbers from like oh nine, we were collecting eighty thousand a year. This past year, we collected like forty-nine thousand. Our town's only grown, there's only more material coming in half, so there's like a large room for improvement there. It's like what Chris is talking about. Part of the committee, we recommended that there be no commercial use for the time being. I think that's really important, that if, you know, you're doing a, I think you're average citizen right now, you know, we were concerned with someone just saying, I'm just gonna dump it on the side of the road. So we didn't want to totally remove the process, because we, you know, littering was also a problem with, in our committee that we had to look at. But I just think the whole process, you implement everything, because if you implement everything, it'll actually work, and this will change the better. If you don't, you pick and choose, it's, it's not gonna work.
No, no, it's all gonna be implemented, but not all at once. We just can't do that. But once you get the flow, it's coming in, and you're not going up and back to bulky waste until you've been checked. Question of what do you have on board? Does it need to be weighed? Let's go do it. Let's do it right. But every vehicle's gonna come in that way. They're not coming in on the straight road anymore. And that's not happening right this minute, but it's right, just ahead of us, not far. That's, that's the goal, that's the purpose of Randy's idea there, is everybody comes in, you check them for a sticker? You got a sticker? What are you carrying? Where does it belong? Do we have to weigh it? Everybody is checked.
This brings to mind my own experience. I think it's important that the number and purpose of the town is provide service to its residents. I understand these guys' concerns. Here's what I offer up. I tear down things occasionally, I need to use to get rid of demolition material. And usually for me, it's a pickup load, say a thousand pounds.
Mm-hmm.
But I pay for it. I pay their going rate now, I could pay a hundred dollars a ton versus a hundred. But for a big job, I tore a building down at my place, it's far easier, physically and also economically, to hire an outside firm like Denny Rubbish. Coming, they got, they put two cans, two big boxes on the ground next to where I'm demolishing. So one, one can takes concrete, cement, I had a lot of cement to develop, tons of it. And the rest was wooden, wood materials. And it was handy for me, because it was close by, I would not hire a can myself. So that, and that didn't go to the East Adams Transfer Station. They were not, the stuff that I put in the can, and the concrete went to Ohio. And the wood went somewhere else. It didn't come to East Adams. I thought it was kinda odd sending my concrete to Ohio, that's where it went. So I, I, what I say, I don't, I don't like the idea of, of me not having the opportunity with a pickup truck to go to the East Adams place station and dump my, my bulky waste. It's gotta be a little bit of hardship for me to drive all the way to Willimantic or Hartford to your other stuff. But for the large commercial operations or a large building, yes, that should go outside.
And from an economic standpoint, I think it's gonna cost you less if you do it for a big building.
Yeah, for a big building, yes, absolutely. Yeah, it did.
Yeah.
But I just.
I mean, I've done that myself.
I wouldn't shut up. When trying to tell you, Emmett, I, I wouldn't like to be shut out of taking my, a small amount of demolition.
And the homeowner, we're not looking to shut them out completely. But we certainly like to see it. And once again, the bag that you get at the Home Depot, and you've just fill it up, and it's substantial, probably doesn't cost you any more than what you're gonna pay at our transfer station. And it makes a lot of sense, it's becoming the way of the future.
Okay, thank you.
You guys have dumpsters too.
Yeah, and you provide them too. So you can provide that service.
I have a question for you, Emmett, Angie Jansky. I wonder if you do go to the bag system, was there gonna be a town vote on that, or is this just all something because the committee?
Our, our lawyer has said we can institute it. We are gonna have to go to the town, there'll be revisions to the ordinance that follow that. But our lawyer has said that we can implement that, and that's probably the route we're gonna take.
They decide.
Yeah, and we'll see how it goes. When it's all said and done, the people of the town do get to make up their minds about what they want.
It's watching that.
That's, that's, that's a good way of doing it, that's how they do it.
It's gonna be changed, you know, it's, it's, you have to go with the time, and if that's what's best for the town of East Adams, then that's what's best to do.
But that's, that's part of what we're doing with Chris in here. She's coming in, she's done this with numerous towns. Salem, Portland, New London, Essex has got it, there's any number of towns that are doing this system right now. She's helped a lot of them to implement it. She knows what the ropes are and how you go about it. So we're not gonna just walk in one day and say, hey, here it is. We're gonna do forums, we're gonna do a marketing, and I call it a marketing, but that's what it is. Getting the word out, explaining what's going on, what the benefits are, why this really makes sense, why it's good for the town, and why it's good for the nation in the end. And once we've done that, then we'll go ahead with it. We're not gonna just impose it out of the blue, because frankly, it'll never fly.
You know, it's crazy that we all rely on social media, but that's a great way, like if you could put something out there to kinda ease people's mind.
Social media, something, I mean, we're using our webpage now, I don't do Facebook, I don't do social media. That's one of the things I'm counting on her being able to bring us into, and get it out there.
I don't know, it seems like it is, like if I were looking for something, I really don't go to the town website as much as I go to these little, you know, what's the, whatever it is in East Adams, if there's something. I do tend to do that, and so if you could ever do that for the residents, I mean, you have to keep the guys all, if that lady comes about the bag system, would you ask the haulers to come? Just because it is something we're gonna have to let our clients know that this is a big change in the town.
Now, it's not gonna impact you, 'cause you can do whatever you like.
Right.
Your people aren't gonna need to use bags.
No, because we're gonna have to haul out of town.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're doing whatever, no problem. But for everybody else, it's gonna be a change. Okay, anyone else? Dave?
I know Portland has a bag system. They have the town bag, you can ride the transfer station around there. But somebody who goes up there, I went with my sister, nobody around, they got two bags, they got the white one and a black one out. Throw the good bag back in their truck, because nobody's patrolling it twenty-four seven.
Well, we've got guys up there pretty much all the time.
You're gonna have to watch it.
It's, you know what?
Nobody's out there, well, somebody will do something.
I, I asked John about that. Stonington's doing this, been doing the bag systems since ninety-two. It's incredibly popular over there, it's working wonderfully. And I said, you know, what about the cheats? He says, not very much. He said it happens. Says most people are interested in doing it right. And I think we can count on that. Most people are pretty decent. You've got the exceptions, you're always gonna have them. Don't let them influence the end.
They went soft once, so.
I mean, there's other people cheating anyway, driving in from, you know, maybe they got into the transfer station before the guys started checking. And I, you know, like if you live up in Westchester and you bring your garbage there, that's a weird cheating.
And I should've, I should've brought the bags over here tonight, I didn't think we were gonna get into this. I've got bags from Portland, I got bags from Salem in my office. And they're addressed, Salem has them in a roll, kinda like this, you peel off the bag that you want. And Portland, they're just kinda folded and laying there. And there's little ones and there's big ones. You know, little old lady, she generates a tiny bag a week, she doesn't need a great big bag. It'd get pretty stale before she gets rid of it.
It does seem.
Me, I need a big bag.
Right, right, and all the family would need, like, I know when they were little, it was like, you know, six bags, so.
Exactly.
With the pricing of the bags, you're gonna try to follow the, if these other towns, right, like the guy.
It's gonna be, the small bag is gonna be a seventy-five cent bag or something like that. The big one's gonna be maybe a dollar and a quarter, a dollar and a half.
If I recall, that's nowhere near the other towns.
That's what?
If I recall, that's nowhere near the other towns. I wanna say like Portland was like four, five dollars.
I think it depends on the size of the bag.
It depends. Portland has two fours and, two fours and fives, I think.
Right, so I think Portland was a dollar twenty-five for the small and like five for the large. So I'm just saying, we should try to keep it somewhere close to that. You know, look at the surrounding town, see what they're doing, just covering it.
I thought you guys gave us a price.
We made, I think we made a recommendation, but that was something that I, you know, in our meeting.
It's lower than what you're talking about now.
Yeah.
But that's something we'll work out as we go. And to be perfectly honest, I'd rather have people enthusiastic about it, seeing how well it works, and we can always raise the price a little later, year to year.
I understand that, but that's counterproductive to what I signed.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, you signed a lower fee.
What?
You signed for a lower fee.
No, I don't believe so.
I'm trying to remember, it seemed like it was.
I don't remember what it was, I thought it was a little higher than.
We need to.
Seventy-five? We just need to look, but I've been, whatever I signed for, I signed for, I was great with it, of course, but.
Thought I had that. Ah, something else. Thought I had that with me.
But it's really whatever, you know, whatever we recommended, I just please follow that, because that's very important to all of us.
Yeah, I, I think we were pretty close to that.
Okay.
It's, it's in that ballpark.
Right, sounds good.
Okay, anything else? Rob, anything you have? Sue?
So I just had a question, do we have our budget workshops? They were published, were they in the paper and everything? Like all.
Budget, they're not in the paper.
I, so they're just posted on the, I thought we talked last year about just making sure, like, would we have a Facebook page? I don't even know.
It's because of the town Facebook page.
And do we have it on that? Like, do we have our meetings?
No, we posted the meetings just like we post any other meeting. You know, it's on the website and the agenda.
It's just that, you, again, we talk about communication and trying to make sure people know we're having our budget workshops, because what happens is we have twenty thousand budget workshops and two people in one head and one other person.
I'm sorry, Sue, I forgot Saturday.
And, and then everyone comes at the last meeting and they're all up in arms, we haven't talked about this, we haven't talked about that. I'm just asking, can we put them on a Facebook page? Can we put them somewhere so people know we're having our meetings? I surely don't go to the town website and look them up. That's me personally, I never go on the town website. Bad me, I must look, and maybe I should. But I'm just saying, we should publish them somewhere else other than us going to look at them. I mean, they come up in your newsfeed if you're on Facebook, it comes up, it pops up. Be great to just have a list of the dates on there. I don't know who takes care of our town website, but I think we're done with public comments, so.
I'll tell you afterwards then.
Like I say, last year, didn't the Board of Finance have a whole schedule? And, and we were both on the whole schedule, that was in the paper.
Right, that's, I thought we had a bigger, so I'm just saying, I just hope people know about our workshops, because I just, it gets really frustrating when we sit here and hours and hours of meetings, and then people show up at the town meeting. And, but they don't know about them. How would they know that we're having them? And they're not being videotaped, so.
Okay.
Just to recommend, I'm just saying between us, I think it's a recommendation that, that I don't know how long it takes, post it on Facebook.
Would you recommend that? Record everything?
I think we should record it, but that's my opinion, because then at least people can look it up and see we actually had a conversation and why we came to the decision we came to. It's not everyone's free holidays on Saturdays. And Mondays. And does everyone know there's a meeting Monday all day, Monday all the town offices are coming in to talk about their budgets? Like, I think people should know that, right? I mean, it's.
Okay.
Um, and what's the schedule for the tree cutting? My reason is, like, they started to cut down trees on BB Road and like, so everyone, that's what I'm like, they're cutting down all kinds of trees, but then they just stopped. I think they cut some brush, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, maybe they cut.
Some of it is Charlie Isling, when he's available. And he gives us a couple of days a week, so they go in there. Charlie's the one who does the stuff up in amongst the wires. Nobody else can do it. But he's available, and he's charging us a hundred and eighty dollars an hour to do it. That's two guys in a bucket truck. And once he stops, we stop. And so if he can give us two days a week, that's great. If he gives us three, that's good. If he only gives us one, that's what we do.
My other question is, in the minutes, you see, I asked if you could, um, look back at the rationale for the hundred and forty per ton? Then we decided to make it a hundred and twenty? Did we look back, or did you find out what the rationale was?
The rationale that Bob gave me, and I asked him the question, and I went back through the report completely, looking for that. And there was nothing in the report that even discussed the amount for that.
I thought they recommended the one forty.
They did.
They did?
He did, and I asked Bob why.
Okay.
And Bob's response was, I wanna make people go somewhere else. I mean, I, I may have a couple of moves on.
I was asking you, because I just wanted to see if they did a comparison of towns or something.
And I talked to John, or actually, I think Linda talked to him, but I was there. And Stonington is at one hundred like we are, and is moving to one twenty. They feel that's the right and fair price. They know what it costs, and.
Okay, I, I just wanted to know the rationale, because, again, if they make a recommendation to us, I wanna follow the recommendation.
And I, I was a little startled by that, because from what I had seen, that was an extremely high price.
Okay.
And I was a little startled by it, I went back and I said, why? Why, Bob? Make people go somewhere else. And I'm not sure that we need to be punitive in terms of what we do. But that was asked, and it's been confirmed.
Okay.
Okay. One other item I have, we got a four and a half year project that has been wrapped up, Bone Mill Road. They got a beautiful little bridge down there. This Saturday at twelve thirty, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting. Now, it has been open, people are going over it, but we are gonna have a big, bright red ribbon, and a couple of kids, and we're gonna chop the ribbon and reopen Bone Mill Road officially. So something you might want to stop down and take a look at. Okay, anything else? I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight and twelve.
Second.
And any discussion? Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There it is, thank you.